Good morning, everybody. This is me. Thank you for your patience and welcome to City Hall. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. The council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. or as close to 10:00 a.m. as we can get a forum here. The council can also be viewed live from home on your cable channel 35, seen via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Ms. Thorpe, please call the roll.
Bernsen, Zalantro, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zain, Padilla, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If I can ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance and ask the Honorable Ms. Han from the 15th District to lead us.
Thank you. Would you all please join with me as we pledge to one of the greatest symbols in America? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Ms. Thorpe, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes, Ms. Ridley, Thomas, seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Zain, Ms. Perry, seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number 18, a request from Councilmember Ridley Thomas to continue that to Friday, October 12.
Members' request to continue item 18 without objection.
Also, a request from the city attorney to continue item 33 through 33E, which is one of the closed session items, to October 23rd.
Item 33E continued also without objection.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. It's a street lighting district, and there is an ordinance.
Item number one, colleagues, notice for public hearing. I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on item number one, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, ask that item number one be continued for four weeks.
Okay, request to continue item number one for four weeks.
That would be November 9th.
Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, without objection, item one will be continued. Next item, please.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, a planning land use management committee report is being submitted.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk and come back to it.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for your patience and welcome to City Hall. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m., or as close to 10:00 a.m. as we can get a forum here. Council can also be viewed live from home on your cable channel 35, seen via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Kirk, please call the roll.
Bernsen, Galantero, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If I can ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance and ask the Honorable Ms. Han from the 15th District to lead us.
Thank you. Would you all please join with me as we pledge to one of the greatest symbols in America? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Madam Kirk, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Ms. Ridley, Thomas, seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Zine moves. Ms. Perry, seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number 18, a request from Councilmember Ridley Thomas to continue that to Friday, October 12.
Members request to continue item 18 without objection.
Also, a request from the city attorney to continue item 33 through 33E, which is one of the closed session items, to October 23rd.
Item 33E continued also without objection.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. It's a street lighting district, and there is an ordinance.
Item number one, colleagues. Notice for public hearing, I do not have requests from members of the public to speak on this item. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on item number one, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, ask that item number one be continued for four weeks.
Okay, request to continue item number one for four weeks.
That would be November 9th.
Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Without objection, item one will be continued. Next item, please.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, a planning land use and management committee report is being submitted.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk and come back to it.
Item number three is confirmation of building and safety assessment in Council District One. A motion is required.
Item number three is before us, colleagues. No requests from members of the public to speak. Public hearing is open and closed. Mr. Reyes.
I'd call that special.
Call it special, or it's before us now if you want to speak.
Great. Just wanted to share with the council that this property, we've been dealing with for quite some time, and our office has gone through the effort of actually identifying all the properties in the northeast that have these kinds of problems. So I'd like to just share with the Department that we hope to get their support to continue isolating these types of properties that are creating flight in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Kirk, did you say a motion is required this time?
Yes, Mr. President.
So, Mr. Reyes moves approval of the report. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Kirk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tagulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held. Item is four through 21. Item 21 has two reports on the file. A motion is required. And also, item number 20, there's a request on behalf of Councilmember Miskowski to hold that until she arrives.
Let's call item 20 special and hold that on the desk until Ms. Miskowski arrives. The 12, 21, special also since a motion is required. Colleagues, items four through 19 are before us. Public hearing has been held. Cards have been submitted on items seven, 16, 17, and 19. We will not reopen the public comment on these items unless there's a motion from the floor. Any specials? Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, 16.
Item 16 called special by Mr. Pacheco. Ms. Zine?
You item 15, one week.
Request to continue item 15 for one week. Without objection. That will be October 17th. Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden calls number 12 special. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Kirk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tagulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved.
And the ordinances are over one week to October 10. Excuse me, October 17th.
Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 22 through 32.
Items 22 through, through 32 are before us. Do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items. We shall deem public hearing open and closed. Any specials? Mr. Garcetti?
No, when this is finished, I need to reconsider 19. Sorry.
Okay. Any specials on items 20 through, 22 through 32? Item 20 has been called special already. Items 20 through, 22 through 32. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Kirk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tagulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, are the closed sessions. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
That's 33 and 34. Let's hold those on the desk.
Item number two, that would take us back to item number two was still on the desk. Do you wish to hold that further, or do you wish to take that up?
Let's, uh, let's continue to hold that for a minute.
Item number 12 was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Item number 12, Mr. Holden.
It must be a staff here from DWP who would want to water power to discuss the amendment to the continuation of contract for three months. Maybe to give them background information, Mr. President.
Good morning, Wendy Yancy, Water Power.
Hi, I'm Iverson from the C O's office.
Right. How long is this contract then? I guess the money is listed here, but why we continue it? We knew we're gonna need it three months ago, five months ago. Is it gonna ever go out the bid again? And if not, why not? Give us the full background on this contract.
Actually, we have a new contract for waste removal, or rubbish removal. And what happened, it was an interim thing. BFI was missing, um, some paperwork for some insurance issues, and we continued this particular contract to hold us over until the other contract, which was won by competitive bid, was let. So this was just, this is sort of a cleanup file, if you will, so that we may continue, so that we can close out the file, actually.
So the Department of Power has rubbish, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And at what location, what site? What do we do in order to cause this? What do we produce for the causes?
It's just regular trash.
Oh, trash, regular trash that you generate? Okay, I see, all right. Okay, Mr. President, it's for three months, at what cost?
Approximately $32,000.
$32,000, $3,000, $10,000 a month? And what about the lowest response of bidding we just got the contract? What are they gonna charge you for a month?
I'm sure, um, do you have any? I don't have that in front of me, Councilmember.
Did you know you're coming to council today?
Yes, sir.
You know this item's gonna be in the agenda today? And you're not ready? And you're admitting it? What about you, Mr. C O?
We looked at the contract in terms of whether it met the city's requirements. The Department is responsible for identifying the contract cost.
Well, you should be looking at it too. Well, if you wanna pass the buck, go ahead. All right, Mr. President, member, it's gonna be for three months, but it's something that you ought to be prepared to share with members of council. When you come to council, you have all the answers, all the questions that we might ask.
Councilman Holden, we were not reviewing the new contract. We were asked to look at this contract extension, the base we pay for services already provided. We have not been asked to review the new contract, the new fighters.
Why we went to the new bidder? Maybe this guy is cheaper?
Oh, it was a competitive bid and the lowest bidder.
He's the old, he?
No, he was, this particular entity was not.
Not. But the other guy has a track record of accomplishment that is comparable to the one that lost.
Yes.
Say yes.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Kirk, please open the roll the recommendations. Close the roll. Tagulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 16 called special by Councilmember Pacheco.
Uh, before we go to item 16, uh, Mr. Garcetti, do you wish to be recognized?
Here, um, item 19, please.
Item 19, motion for reconsideration. Members wishing to speak on reconsideration of item 19? Seeing none, Madam Kirk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tagulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item 19 is reconsidered. Uh, Mr. Garcetti, do you wish that were discussed today, or different course of action?
Yes, please, for today.
Then, uh, let's take that in the natural order. We're coming back to item 16 now. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I simply want to touch General Services and ask if the needs assessment included, uh, the childcare center and on our first floor. If I just get a report on whether or not the childcare center is gonna be also assessed.
The Department of General Services has been working with the childcare center. We've done a number of, uh, taken a number of steps as, uh, for instance, we've integrated their camera system into our camera system. We've put plexiglass on all the windows. We've stationed a guard outside their door, and during activations, we also put another guard on the curb. Certainly work with them over the course of this time to make sure that their needs are met.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make sure that we're taking care of the childcare center.
Thank you very much. Ms. Han?
Yes, I too just want to, um, express my real concern at what I perceive as to be a real lack of real security measures here at City Hall. I mean, yesterday, you know, it took 15 minutes to navigate around the barricades with your car, but then at the entrance of City Hall, anybody can walk in, anybody can get a visitor's badge, uh, briefcases, purses, nothing is checked. We have no metal detectors here. So it seems to me that we're, we're protecting the outside of the building from any drive-up bomber, but, uh, anybody has interest. Even at the old City Hall East chambers, there were metal detectors. Uh, I'm just real concerned that, um, I'm concerned about how long it's gonna take to implement some of these measures. I'm concerned that a lot of city employees have, you know, old ID badges. Um, I'm concerned about how many outstanding ID badges there are out there, and if we're allowing people to come in who aren't even city employees anymore. My suggestion would be to immediately, if we're concerned, move the metal detectors that were over in City Hall East and immediately install them here. It seems to me that wouldn't be a tremendous added expense. I just think security here is really, it's a joke. I've had people tell me they, no one checks anything when they walk in that main thing. So I'm more concerned about the people who work here in City Hall every day, that, uh, we may have, uh, cement barricades up outside in the street, but our, our security inside this building is pathetic. And I would like to know, you know, I don't, I think 30 days is too long to try to come back and say we're gonna implement a plan. Some of this stuff ought to be happening yesterday.
We are working on some of the things you spoke about in terms of the metal detectors for council chambers. We're in process now, working with the company that does metal detectors for the White House and a number of other major, high-profile, um, institutions. The difficulty of putting in metal detectors in this area relates to the historic core and historic fabric, and we intend to have those metal detectors in within the next 30 to 45 days. They have to be fabricated and installed. In terms of the, the package screening, the efforts that we have underway right now focus on vehicle screening and focus on personal screening. Package screening is another element. That is a step up, up in that direction. Certainly, that's something that should be considered by city council, and if approved, we can move forward with it. That is not what's before us today. Today, what is before us is, is simply to provide the level of security that you currently have, which is an improvement over the level of security that we've had up until about a month ago. We have our officers working significant number of additional hours. We've brought in significant number of additional contract employees. This package will provide some electronic security systems that you currently don't see in the building that'll add, that add to the security of the building on the fourth floor, on the 10th floor, on the, on the surrounding areas, and in the, in and around the council chambers. So that's, that's what this package has, and the idea is to prove this in concept as the first step, not the last step. Once this is approved, we can move forward on this, and then we will work with you, work with the rest of the council on those other needed issues, and we can do that concurrently.
I have a few minutes left. I'm, I am, I find 45 days unacceptable to install a metal detector. I mean, uh, if there's anything we're hearing is that, uh, there's a hundred percent chance of another terrorist attack, uh, based on, uh, America's latest wave of attacks. 45 days from now to install a metal detector. And, and, and frankly, how difficult is it for our guards to physically search a briefcase or a purse? When you go to the L.A. County Board of Supervisors, you cannot get into those chambers without having your purse and briefcase physically inspected. I don't think that's high technology. I don't think that's added expense. Um, I, I think employees in City Hall are not feeling secure right now, and I think 45 days is entirely too long. Uh, I think we ought to act like there's going to be something that happens tomorrow.
Councilmember address that we will expedite the process and try to have a contract in or within, um, a couple of weeks. Is that acceptable to start installation of detectors? We can start the, the old one, and the, the old ones are available to be installed, however, I mean, from an aesthetic standpoint, from a fire standpoint.
You know, I don't know, I don't know who in this, in this building cares about the aesthetics, uh, when we're worried about public safety.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Uh, the Chair of the I T G S Committee, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it has to be appreciated that we must act and act expeditiously. And I would simply request that rather than attempt to respond to directives that may come from any member at this particular point, that you go back with the consciousness of cutting through every single aspect of red tape to move toward implementation possible, and be prepared to report back to committee the first thing next week. The next point I want to make, Mr. President, members of the council, is that item number six, um, on the report, uh, on this item in our agenda, does, uh, address, uh, the sweep of things that Ms. Han, uh, was attempting to call to everyone's attention. That is in this report. Budget and finance and personnel waived this item. It was supposed to go to those two committees for the express purpose of our expediting it here, getting it to the council so that the C O can authorize the release of the resources so that we can move forward. Uh, I suspect that that will happen, I expect that that will happen, uh, no later than tomorrow. Therefore, uh, the authorization to proceed with a whole range of things that essentially upgrades, uh, security in the civic center will be well on its way. Calls and concerns have come to the attention of our offices regarding the Joy Picas, uh, childcare center, and, um, it seems to me that item number six, uh, the, uh, the matter before us should be amended to include, um, a specific report back in, uh, the report to come before us on, uh, the adequacy of security measures for the childcare center, and what then needs to be done, uh, to further enhance that. Mr. President, members of the, uh, council, uh, there is no denying the fact that, uh, we are in a moment in time where we have to be, uh, very, very conscious of security in the civic center. This building and the four other facilities in what we traditionally define as the civic center where municipal services are being offered. It is, uh, the full intent of this body to cause, uh, the General Services Department, the Police Department, the Department of Transportation to work in concert, the engineer. All of these departments have to be coordinated accord, along with the Emergency Operations Center, to make sure that we get the security upgraded to the level that is appropriate. It ought to be appreciated as well that this concern for the, uh, security needs assessment, um, is not new pursuant to September 11th. This is phase two of the implementation that we're engaged, and it is hanged pursuant to September 11th. And I think, uh, what we should do is expedite, uh, whatever requests so that the General Services Department, the C O, and the like should, uh, move faster than, uh, what they had originally intended so that we can implement accordingly. Uh, Mr. President, with those amendments, members of the council, council move the item before us.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, and I agree with, uh, my colleague, Councilmember Han, and also I know Councilmember Ridley Thomas, uh, was very concerned about moving this through and passing through the budget, finance, and also personnel committee, which I waived to my committee. But a couple of things I think we can implement now. Uh, you talk about historic fabric. The metal detectors that we had over at City Hall East, I don't know any reason why, since this country's at war, as according to the President of the United States, and we got bombs going over in Afghanistan, why we can't immediately take those metal detectors and put them at the main entrance, but we have limited access to this facility, and put them at the main entrance to this building. The historic fabric means nothing if this place suffers some damage because of some terrorist activity. They're sitting over there collecting dust. They worked well in City Hall East, so I don't know why we can't, instead of just protecting this chamber, but protect this entire structure since you've got access limited, to put those metal detectors out on Main Street in the entrance and screen people as they come through. It seems appropriate, and if someone wants to squawk from the historic committee, then let them squawk. We gotta protect the people in this building and the employees in this building, and it's an expeditious matter. We can do it today. So I would suggest that maybe you move that forward. As far as the, uh, visitor passes, the visitor passes are not collected when people leave the building. So someone comes in to get the visitor's pass, they walk out, they can come back in, there's no check on anything. And if anything, take those visitor's passes away when people leave the building.
Mr. President, point of order, may I?
Yes.
If in fact, members of the council, if in fact, uh, we are talking about the potential, uh, of a breach in security, may I request, Mr. President, that we refrain from being explicit as to what the particular problems are? Otherwise, we do no more than to... Otherwise, we do no more than to forecast the possibility of someone doing something that we wouldn't be done.
Well, there's that concern, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and also the concern about discussions that have to take place at the committee level, for the discussions that will continue to take place at the committee level, and ask all members with their ideas and specific concerns to please participate at that level of the process as well.
I have one more issue regarding the contract security around this building. What kind of background is conducted on those people, if any?
Each one of the security companies is required to provide background checks in terms of their history, their criminal history, those kinds of things.
Did you know that you can get a guard card and while you're processing that, be a security guard? I think we need to do checks within this operation of the city if they're going to be at this site.
We certainly can add additional checks to them.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
In aerospace industry, you couldn't go in the gate unless you had a security clearance. You couldn't get a job unless you had a security clearance, and that was average citizen. You're all cleared. Something worse that weren't. Just probably they couldn't get hired. And I don't understand that in the year 2001, we don't know bottom from up. You figure that out. You know, you just did not respond to Ms. Hahn when she says, "Why not security and why not none?" You're on top of it when you put those detective vices over there in City Hall East. But, you know, there are times I just feel like not being a nice guy, just firing, just tell you, "Out of here." It's an insult to this body for you to sit there and say, "We gotta get to it." Just in one day, those K rails were there. I don't deserve enough. And I saw it on TV. K rails are there. Who told you to do it? You didn't think of doing it on your own, because it'd take 45 days. Two months. Too long. You know, I came here and I discovered that a lot of bureaucrats were sitting on the fist, ran back in their stomachs, and they were very comfortable. And I said, "Get up off it." And I'm saying that again today. I'm not mad at you or anything like that. We work together. But my God, you gotta be responsive. You gotta be aggressive. You gotta say, "You want it? I'll do it yesterday." Then when your evaluation comes up where we give a little input, we might remember to say some nice things about you. But today, I don't think I get a good grade at all. You're not going to get a good grade at all. In fact, why are you in that position? You assisted AG, right?
Exactly.
Why? Why is a general manager over there fluffed up and letting this happen? You tell him, he act like he doesn't even hear you. He doesn't have ears anymore. I'm saying to you right now, we want those devices moved over here by mañana. And that doesn't mean the day after tomorrow. I want you to go over there and get them, sit them down there and make an operation about fraud. Do you hear what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying, Councilmember.
All right. That's the order, and it shall be done. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As many of you know, the City Hall building sits in the ninth council district in the civic center, and so I'm extremely mindful and very cognizant of the importance of not only protecting the people in this building, the building itself, but all of the surrounding civic center buildings. Because if something happens hurt, it will hurt the entire civic center community. There are a number of things that I'd like to say, some recommendations and suggestions, but I agree with Councilmember Ridley Thomas that I do not want to say them in a public setting because I think they are sufficiently important and need to be addressed by your department quickly that I feel that we either need to meet with you immediately or have you make sure that you go to every single council member.
Councilmember, what I might suggest rather than that is if you want to hold this and go into closed session, you may do so under the Brown Act. There is a government code section which talks about public security to public buildings, and you could do that.
Okay. I'm not sure if there's... I don't know if there's that much interest in doing that.
It would take a motion by the councilmembers. Majority motion.
Mr. Ridley Thomas. I think a more thorough approach would be, although that might be, I use one to collect the context, the General Services Department needs to, on this day, go to each council office and request an opportunity to talk with each member and/or his or her chief of staff about specific items they have observed that need to be addressed. It would seem to me that there's a more fruitful and productive way to nail down some of the observations that could be made, and if there's a need for closed session, then so be it. But I think there needs to be a more exhaustive treatment of the concerns that members have, and it may not be best done in an open or closed session for that.
We will do that.
Under the Brown Act, if you want, if the council is to instruct General Services on how to act, they would have to do so in a meeting, and that could be in closed session.
But as pursuant to this action, that I would so move.
Appreciate you outlining our options, that is, the attorney. I believe what Mr. Ridley Thomas is offering is another alternative consistent with the timeline that he mentioned before about this item being agendized for committee next week as well.
Question to the city attorney.
Ms. Perry.
Your concern expressed in your recommendation is regarding a possible serial meeting violation, and I would not want that to happen to this council. So what I'm saying is that if they, if the input can be sent to General Services and then whatever decision is they need to act on, they would come back to council either in an open or, depending on what it is, a closed session meeting, and we can inspect them.
The city attorney, again, I appreciate that that is exactly what has been requested. Mr. Ridley Thomas has mentioned he's expecting and will probably agendize the General Services Department report to committee as early as next week, so we are in compliance. Ms. Perry, if you would to continue.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. One additional point, following up on what Ms. Perry was asking about and following up on the sentiments expressed by Ms. Hahn. We actually, right now, have in place a threat preparedness task force, Ms. Perry, which is meeting regularly. We've had a number of meetings, and they've been productive. We've brought together agencies from throughout the city. We've also brought in county and other law enforcement agencies. It's a task force. It's not a committee of the council, so the Brown Act is not implicated by what we are considering there. We're not making legislation, but we will come up with recommendations both in the short term and in the long term. That's our goal. And as part of the motion that set up that task force, General Services was put on the task force. So what I will do at the task force today is re-raise all of the questions that my colleagues have raised today in an effort to try to be constructive on this part. I should also note that the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Ridley Thomas, I know, has been working quite diligently on this particular issue of securing city facilities, and I think we should all recognize him for those efforts. But I want my colleague, Ms. Hahn, to know that I could not agree more with the urgency that you expressed. And at times, I have encountered a similar frustration with respect to similar bureaucratic elements, but I'm going to keep charging ahead. And if you want to learn more about what we're doing in the task force, I'm happy to tell you about it because when we bring forward our recommendations, both short term and long term, we're going to need support to get them done and not to have endless agony over them. And I think you'd agree with that.
Ms. Hahn.
I would just like to have an amending motion to the current one, and I know we've put it several times. I think Councilwoman Holden ordered you to, but I put it in the form of a motion that immediately the metal detectors that were in City Hall East be moved immediately to outside the chambers. Because like you said, you at least want the same security that we had before. We don't even have that, so.
All right. I believe that brings three amending motions. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, the motion that is made has to be made against the backdrop of what's going to be effective security. So it would seem to me that barring no reason, fiscal or otherwise, that that shouldn't happen, we should proceed.
We will. I move the previous question, Mr. President. We have one member still waiting to speak. Ms. Perry.
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Weiss, and thank you very much for reminding me. The reason I brought this up today is because I think it's so important to be able, for us to be able to say certain things in a very secure environment so that they're not taken beyond two or three people, and that's why I wanted to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other members? Previous question has been called. Ms. Hahn wishes to speak, so we take a vote?
What?
Point of order. Mr. Thomas moved the previous question.
Yes, he did.
He was out of order because he spoke and then he moved the previous question, which is meaning he was out of order. That was not in order. That was not in order.
Ms. Hahn.
I was just approaching my colleague, Dana Sign, and actually, I thought about it. Would we rather have the metal detectors moved to the main entrance as opposed just to the chambers?
No, the main entrance. Main entrance.
Because it's no good just to protect those who come in here. It's better to protect every city employee of City Hall, so we can move to the main entrance.
With all that being said, Madam Clerk, please guide us through the amendments and the matter before us.
The First Amendment is Councilmember Hahn's amendment, which she just amended to mention the main entrance of City Hall to move the metal detectors from City Hall East to City Hall, the main entrance.
Before we vote, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the request of the Chair of Public Safety, if we would cause item number six of the report to be referred to Public Safety, that would be appreciated and as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Without objection, let's do that. Please, Mr. Zine, on the amendment before us, we're about to take a vote.
One more point of clarification. We're only going to maintain one entrance to City Hall, correct? One entrance, the main entrance. The others will be secured.
Right now, we have the main entrance open. We also have the Third Street Bridge or the Third Floor Bridge.
Now, there's a dilemma. Because if we do the main entrance here, that covers this issue, you got the bridge. Do you have another device that can be in that location?
I would imagine, Mr. Zine, if I may, that that would be part of the report back that is due next week. We only have a certain number of metal detectors already in possession by the city. Metal detectors are in possession. We can't put them at the Main Street entrance. But if we only have one set, we can't magically get to five sets by tomorrow. No, we cannot. So we will do what we can with what we have between today and tomorrow and deal with how we grow that in the report back next week. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, they're creative. You're smart. You're going to shut the bridge down until you can get it squared away. People who work here have their badges, they come through. That means another person can't go up the elevator on the other side and come across the bridge. So you shut it down. There's no problem. Real simple. Shut it down. Close it out. You understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. Is that a motion, Mr. Holden? I think there's a number of things we can do to work with the situation and make sure that all the visitors go in through one entrance. And I think what we need to do, rather than try to make those specific decisions right here today, we'll get the metal detectors installed in the Main Street entrance, and we'll try to work a system out so that we don't have packages and other kinds of things coming in with visitors through the other entrances. If you give us a couple of days, we can do that and get back.
Sounds like you're going to shut it down. That sounds good to me. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Also, I believe we do have the magnetic ones within an apartment, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We can use those in addition to the detectors.
Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Would you ask Mr. Holden if the previous question is in order now?
We have the amendment to move the metal detectors over as has been described. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next amending motion.
The next amending motion is a motion presented by Councilmember Padilla and seconded by Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Ridley Thomas. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is also approved.
And now you have the committee report as amended.
Over. Motion to approve the entire package. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved.
Forthwith on that, Mr. President.
Forthwith to the mayor, and we expect quick action taken by the department.
May I request forthwith on item number 24 as well, please?
Forthwith on 24.
Thank you.
No. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Item 24 is an ordinance. We have less than 10 members present that's being held over for second reading.
All right.
Next item, please.
Item number 19 was reconsidered and is on the desk before you.
Item 19, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. President, we need to amend this to reflect the language to be the same as the language on the Transportation Committee's agenda. The description of the area that is going to be bounded by the special parking district is slightly different, and I fear it could lead to some technical misunderstanding. So if we can amend that as it is, the language for the area that's going to be bounded, I can read it if you want, or I can just give it to you. It's on the north by both sides of Van Pelt Place and West Silver Lake Drive, on the west by both sides of Westerly Terrace, on the south by both sides of Berkeley Avenue, and on the east by the center line of Silver Lake Boulevard. And I understand that there is a gentleman here who wanted to include some streets from CD4. If you want to state for the record what that is, and hold the balance of my time.
Areas between Westerly Terrace and Readsdale Avenue on Effie Street, immediately west of the proposed parking district, 98. And it's already a serious, parking is already a serious problem on that portion of Effie, and it will only be compounded with the proposed parking district. And I have in excess of two-thirds signatures on that block, and kindly request that you could amend the motion to include this little portion of the block.
Okay. I used to live on Rotary, so I know the area quite well, and we get spilt off as well. Because there's not a representative, and I know how frustrating that is, because I was just in CD13 when we had eight months of no representative, I can help you shepherd that, but if we can wait, it's only going to be about a few weeks until we have a representative from CD4. I think that would probably be the appropriate thing to do. So I think we'll keep this the way it is right now, and then we'll move forward with that later this month when the election is over, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia has offered a technical amendment to item 19. Without objection, we can adopt that into the Transportation Committee report and take a vote on the report as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
19 as amended is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 20 is on the desk. Councilmember, Ms. Akowski requested that item.
Ms. Akowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, item 20 contains a lot of history, a lot of information, but in fact, what it is, is a comprehensive report that has been put together by the L.A. Police Department, the city's Personnel Department to deal with that issue that we know is at a crisis level in the city, and that is our ability to recruit quality officers for the Los Angeles Police Department. We have present members of the Personnel Department and the Police Department who, starting literally from the budget hearings of last year, started to come together, identify what some of the problems were, identify some of the solutions, and work together comprehensively to prepare a report. What you have before you today is a unanimous recommendation of the five-member Budget Finance Committee and the five-member Public Safety Committee for the plan and the strategy to move forward. This is not a cure-all. We need to stay alert. We need to stay in close contact with these two agencies, which are now, for the first time, given some work that was done last year, actually located in the same facility. So that argument in the past of files having been lost, or they were transferred from one place to another, lack of clarity was what was going on with recruits, the speed with which recruits can get through the process, increasing the numbers of people who are just going through the process, so that we have a good quality number at the other end and the ability to fill our classes each month, as we've got the capability to do it. That's what this plan presents, and your committees will stay in close contact with these agencies on a monthly reporting basis to make sure we are receiving the data and we are receiving the results. As I said, it's not a cure-all. We have some other issues, and as those issues come up where we need to fill a new gap in one of those... and one of those gaps is with the polygraph, and through the Personnel Committee, we are dealing with that and bringing in a separate recommendation. But I recommend wholeheartedly this report. These two agencies, which some years in the past pointed fingers at each other as to why there was a problem, are today holding hands, literally, in terms of coming together to make this report work, to say that we will have case managers, we will have expeditors, we will have a responsible party, where we will know and have information so that we won't get, even as councilmembers, and you may be getting some of the same calls that I have gotten in the past, which is from recruits, saying, where am I? How come I haven't heard? What's happening? This process that we're recommending today will eliminate that and will create this smooth track, looking for incentivizing both the departments and the recruiting process, and really getting the best results for the department and the best results for the city, yielding more officers, more quality officers, and that's what this report is about. I don't know whether or not each of the agencies would like to speak just a moment about the outlines of the proposal as it was recommended.
I just want to echo what the councilmember was just describing. We've worked out for about nearly a year to create a solid front between the Personnel Department and the Police Department, and for the first time, we're in total agreement as to how to get the job done, and I think that once this is passed, we're prepared to hit the ground running. In fact, within both Personnel Department and the Police Department, we've begun reorganizing our staffs and relocating them in anticipation of the support from the council on this effort.
My name is Rhonda Sims Lewis, representing the Personnel Department, representing the general manager Maggie Whelan, who is out of town right now. But if she was here, she would tell you that she is very pleased with the plan that the department has put together. She's ready to put the staff in place to make this plan happen, and she believes that it will address many of the concerns of the community right now, many of the concerns of the mayor's office and the council regarding putting more officers on the street in an expeditious manner. We are very much enjoying our cooperative relationship with the Los Angeles Police Department, and we are very confident that this plan will get us closer to reaching the goals of putting the officers on the street right away.
Mr. Holden.
President members, this is digressing from the standard that we employ today in terms of selecting police officers. You talk about streamlining a backlog investigation and a PO's report back to the Public Safety Committee. Talk about eliminating the polygraph test backlog. What are you talking about here? You says here, that's why you direct the study for elimination, you can look at eliminating polygraphs, that you talk about. The backlog of polygraphs. You say backlog? Elimination of the polygraph backlog. How you supposed to do that? Okay, so you're still going to add the polygraph?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, how are you going to streamline backlog checks?
Well, part of what we accomplish through the polygraph, we do not have to do the extensive, long, involved backgrounds that we were required to do because we didn't have the polygraph.
Oh, yes, you have to do the background. Because you can't ask every single question and get to the bottom of the summation that you're looking for on a polygraph.
What typically happens in the polygraph examination is when the candidates come in to be polygraphed, there's a pre-poligraph screening, and rarely is it the polygraph that disqualifies the employee. It's those questions they know they're about to be asked and the people that are prospective recruits.
I talked to a guy at Beverly Hills the other day, he's a police officer, sergeant. I said, are you recruiting LAPD officers? We can't find any good ones. Why? They came past the polygraph. Now, you probably know as much about that as I do, which means you got a bunch of liars in the department, a lot of them. Now, if you're going to eliminate the process, the current streamlining, then you're going to have a bunch of bad cops.
No, no.
Rampart is going to be nothing compared to what some of these guys are going to do once they get in, before it's got in their hands.
Actually, our Board of Inquiry found exactly the opposite, because we did not have the polygraph. We had no way to support our background investigations. We got in areas where people lied to us.
The reason why they can't transfer out of here and go through a 312 offense is because they came past the polygraph. That means we have guys who lied to LAPD to become cops, but they can't go to another department because of the lies. They're not clean. And yet, there, they're not clean enough to serve other departments, but they're in the LAPD, and that's why the chief is punishing a lot of them. When he catch them, you should be doing the work before they get to the chief, before they cross the line. And that has not been done by department personnel. And then what did the league do? They blamed the chief. They blamed the councilmembers. You know that. Let's talk about what the real problem is and why we have the problem.
That's why we've implemented the polygraph in the screening process now.
Well, then, what about the ones who would be hired that did not take the polygraph? Can we require them to take it now?
No, we cannot.
If they answer 312, say, okay, we put 312, we pass the polygraph. I have no problem with that.
Interesting idea.
Hey, I'm on your side then. I would maybe trust the guy that is going to do the right thing and not cost us any more lawsuits. Look at the lawsuits we have to pay for. This is a real problem in the department, therefore, it's a real problem for the city because some guys have got under the wire. Am I right?
That's correct.
Well, the public needs to know that, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
From the top to the bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I understand Councilmember Holden's concerns, and I sat through these hearings with Councilmember Mr. Kowski and other colleagues. I know that Deputy Chief Bostick has pledged this will work. If it doesn't work, Deputy Chief Bostick can go out and work a footbeat, correct Deputy Chief Bostick?
I'd love to work a footbeat.
I bet you I'd love to work a footbeat, yeah. I know that the department has struggled for many years to get cooperation with Personnel Department and with your leadership in the Police Department and Maggie Whelan's leadership in the Personnel Department. I think that's what brought this together. I know Phyllis Lyons has a lot of experience. I have a lot of confidence in you folks to make this happen. I know if it doesn't happen, then we're going to be screaming louder than we are now, and the citizens are going to be screaming. And there's a lot of candidates out there that are looking for a place to work, and hopefully, they can choose LAPD. So I wish you the best with it, and if it doesn't, then you will be on the chopping block, believe me, all three of you, and especially Deputy Chief Bostick, who's my good friend. Thank you. We got good confidence in you. Thank you much.
The third council district needs another senior lead officer over there. Mr. Rayes.
Looking at your report, and I wanted to find out, maybe you can estimate what this additional resource will do in terms of enhanced recruitment. Is there a way to look at a number? We know how many are leaving, we know how many are retiring, how many are going to be on the reserves. So we're enhancing our recruitment process. Is there any way to look at a number which says it'll increase X amount of recruits? Is there anything like that?
We anticipate more than doubling the number of people that we test each month. We were able to pour some money into advertising last spring, and we saw the results immediately. Because of the generosity of the city council, we've continued to spend that advertising dollar and monitor it very carefully. We would anticipate that we will be testing approximately 1,100 to 1,200 candidates each month, which should yield us eventually up to 100 recruits each month.
How many recruits do we have now?
The last class we put in was half that. It was about 43. And throughout the previous year, we hired only 278 police officers, so we actually lost momentum. We attrited more than we hired, and we anticipate turning that around this year and the following year.
On your fifth point in your report, there's a reference to direct LAPD and Personnel Department to develop a method to measure the success of MOU, member of agreement and reorganization over the one-year trial period. So you're actually looking at reorganizing your whole methodology and how you recruit?
We reorganized the whole process. We're in the same building together now. We do have some goals of 100 recruits a month, once we get up and running. And so fortunately or unfortunately, depending upon your perspectives, the economic issues that are facing this country will help us, because that's hurt us. We have not been competitive in the job market. And so I don't feel we're going to have a significant problem reaching our goal.
This is a rather sensitive issue, but when you look at marketing and recruiting, are you speaking to the frontline officers in terms of what their impressions are about the department to offset that informal rumor mill of why people are leaving? Are you talking about issues of how the department is managed? It's not an attack on the chief, believe me, that's not my intention. But if it's going to be effective, obviously, there's a whole body of people out there who want to become officers, and obviously, they're talking to other folks. We have this hemorrhaging going on, people leaving. Are you going to get to that point?
Yeah, I think we would be naive not to admit that what the department has gone through for the last two years hasn't impacted our recruiting. That happens every time we go through these down cycles. This is my third, what I would call, a down period in the LAPD, and we've gone through this three times, where the department deals with its reputations and its issues, the internal problems, and people leave. But we're still the LAPD, and regardless of what people say about us internally within the city and the different things that are going on, we still are the LAPD. I travel around the country for the LAPD, and the whole world wants to know what LAPD is doing. That's not by mistake. We still are a great organization with great people, and eventually, we will overcome all of the things that are currently happening internally, and we will begin to recruit people again, because inevitably, people want to be a member of the Los Angeles Police Department. That'll never change.
Okay, my specific question is, are you talking to the frontline officers on the street who right now are having very serious issues about how we are scheduled, how they're being treated as officers? I'm talking about the guys in the trenches. Are you speaking to them?
We speak to them all the time. You know, it's just going to take time for them to understand that a lot of the Christopher Commission recommendations and things that we've implemented are not fun. The consent decree is not going to be fun, but we don't have options. These are things that we're being required to do by the consent decree in the Christopher Commission.
So in your report, we will see that interaction? We will see the input, the feedback from your conversations with them?
Well, one thing that we have implemented in the past, as far as recruitment is concerned, are focus groups, where we bring in a variety of officers in and talk to them about what they like, what they dislike about the job, and get their feedback as far as, you know, their overall perception of the job. And that helps us a lot in our recruitment efforts, if that's what you're getting to.
Yes, Mr. Rayes. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wonder if you could just detail a bit, I know in other actions that you're taking right now, but specifically recruitment of women police officers, some of the additional measures that you're taking. I know there's a recent study showing the efficacy of women police officers, especially in dealing with complaints of violence. And also, I've seen LAPD, and I'd like to praise you in terms of recruiting gay and lesbian officers. I was just at the L.A. Valley Pride march with Councilmember Zine and the mayor this weekend, and there was a booth that was there, and it's a good booth, but it's still, you know, only a few folks getting there. What additional actions are you taking to recruit gay and lesbian officers in the way the Sheriff's Department has in West Hollywood very effectively as well?
There's the continuous effort to recruit gay and lesbian officers. We have gay and lesbian recruiters who outreach to the community on a continuous basis, not only within Los Angeles, but surrounding states and cities. We advertise in gay and lesbian periodicals and attend events frequently.
Have you been able to study what the sheriff's offices has done to be able to recruit specifically in those communities and kind of do best practices assessments within that area as well?
Our LAPD recruiters talk to the sheriff's recruiters all the time. They are in constant exchange and interchange of information. I think they probably learn as much from us as we learn from them.
We usually recruit at all the same events together.
Mr. Holden.
Well, you have a certain sample from the population that you're choosing your officers from, and the sample suggests how many would fit the mold and how many would not, based on some of the questions, the background. What's the fallout? I mean, what's the of the officers that you, say you interview 100 officers, how many you think would be screening?
It takes us about 1,100 to 1,500, depending upon the candidate pool, to get a class of 100.
It's about a 6%.
That doesn't say much about our society, does it? It says they're doing some bad things out there before you even get a chance to interview them, and they won't qualify for police.
Well, I don't think there's any mistaking the influence of the drug problem, but more importantly, the financial issues that affect a lot of candidates.
Yeah, they don't pay their bills.
Don't pay their bills.
Then when they get hired, they don't pay their bills anymore. Do you fight them?
Yes, we do.
You do not.
Well, we discipline them.
Well, if they do that, then the league is going to go after the chief for doing that. Mr. Zine, you know that. But hey, Mr. Zine, it's all right. You have your time in there. But the fact that, man, those are the kind of problems the public don't understand. That's the population that you have to select from. And when these kids go out and they don't get in step right away, then they're not qualified candidates anymore. Then you have to give up some of the requirements that you impose on recruits, and you got to decide which of those you're going to give up on, and put these guys to a screening program, and then lecture them, and watch them as they go through the process in order to get a larger number of response, qualified candidates. Then you just reduce the qualification. I think that's what I'm talking about, right? You have to think about doing that, like undercredit and stuff like that.
After the Board of Inquiry, no, we haven't. In fact, we've tightened them up.
You tightened them up. So for those who think we're going to be able to hire more police officers, forget it. The candidates just are not there. Forget it. If you're going to screen out 1,500, you only get 100, 1,500, you'd say that?
Yes.
6% response. It's just not going to happen. And then the 6% you get, by the time you get in position to hire them, they got a job someplace else for the most part. You hire maybe 3% of them. So we have problems that's not solvable.
I think I'm more optimistic. I believe that our goal is to hire, is to bring more people into the system so that we have more people to pick from.
All right, you can be optimistic if you choose, but I'm just saying, the sample is already there, and you already have the studies that tells you that they're not available. I said, what is available? That we shouldn't lose that 600 police officers that we need them here right now in these robberies, who are in reserves. And somebody needed to put a motion in, the mayor, someone should say, hey, we got these terrorists here, terrorist threats, blocking off City Hall, we got crime ongoing, we need their soldiers for the city of Los Angeles. If you keep that 600 here, it took us 15,000 screenouts in order to get those 600, and we need them now more than ever. Did you make that statement, request to the federal government?
We have the ability from time to time with individuals to talk to the military and on some occasions for some very specialized assignments where we think they're critical to the LAPD, we have been successful. But they will not blanketly say, no, they will not.
Well, then you better do it for 600 times.
Mr. Holden. Thank you, Mr. President, for your listening. Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Present colleagues, I move the previous question.
Okay, you are the final speaker. Waiting to speak. The committee report is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
That item is approved. Well done, the work. Next item, please.
Item number 21. That item has two reports on the file, Budget and Finance Committee and Public Safety.
Item 21 is before us. Chair of the committee wishing to make a motion. Are the two reports consistent?
The Budget and Finance Committee has more recommendations, but they are consistent.
Include the Public Safety Committee report recommendations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, is there a motion for the Budget and Finance Committee report? Mr. Mr. Kowski moves. Please open the roll. Close the roll.
Didn't I call inspection?
Yeah.
I did.
No, no, item 21.
I think I called 21 inspection. I did not.
No? No? You had to call item 12 special. So, you wish to speak on item 21 before we tabulate the vote? Okay. Mr. Holden?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just think it's important to note that we're going to buy some additional equipment. On the agenda today, there was a discussion about releasing surplus equipment into the Compton area, I believe that was the case. And I just want to get some information from the department. Is the kind of equipment that they classify to be surplus, whether or not in their minds they have any, could have any additional use for it, and delayed spending or buying new equipment, if at all? And so, they have a program in place, not that, well, now we think we need some new equipment, so many hours we're putting that equipment, and yet, you give it to another community and they can have a use for it. Could you respond to that, sir?
The equipment that we do send off to as salvage is long beyond its useful life for our application within the city, and typically, this equipment is sent overseas, south of the border, where they find use for this older equipment.
So, yours is a 15-year, you keep it about 15 years, your equipment?
Right now--
15-year program, it says, right?
We're asking for a 15-year replacement cycle on heavy apparatus. Right now, I have vehicles in my fleet that are over 25 years.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, these are hard times now economically. The monies that we anticipated coming in, we're not going to be coming in because the economy is going to be depressed. The sales taxes, the taxes that we're going to receive, we're not receiving. So, we have to revise a budget in January sometime, and so, that's my main concern. The fact that we have to finance these buildings, this equipment, and that's going to be ongoing for a period of years. So, I raise these questions to part to you, so you can maybe generate a mindset saying, "If we have to have it, yes, go forward. But if we don't, can we just wait a year or two and see where we're going to be after this crisis situation, and the economy picks up? Not only will we lose money here in the city, but the state, federal government as well, there will be deficits." You do know what I mean, don't you?
Yes.
Short fall deficit. Do you have to have it, is my question?
Right now, our fleet, 40% of our fleet is beyond replacement cycle, and yes, right now, it's critical.
You just tell me a yes and--
The answer is yes.
You do have to have it.
The answer is yes, councilman. We have--
All right, and I trust your professional judgment on that basis, I'll say yes, but I did want to put those questions on the table and get an answer from you. Next time you come around, you'll think about them before you get to the table, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. We still have the Budget and Finance Committee report before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number two is still on the desk.
Item number two, Manor and Council District Number Two. We have-- Welcome, Mr. Burton, to the meeting. Mr. Burton wishes to speak, or Mr. Reyes? Item number two? No?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, we had a split decision on this particular one. This is in the second district, and this is for antennas on an existing building that is already has a number of these antennas which are attached beside the building and barely visible, visible at all. And part of the proposal is for them to build a fencing which will hide the appendatures which are already on the roof of this building, which means the air conditioning and other vent units and so forth. And the visual impact is none. The appeal seemed to be more centered on the basis of the nearness to the school and a health reason which we cannot take into consideration because the federal government has exempted us as far as any type of use of health or danger of safety as far as the antennas are concerned. So, under the circumstances, the only people that would see anything would be people on the hill above it, and they see what's there now. In fact, the view will actually be improved. I think this is basically an emotional issue, and being as the, we do seek to try to get shared locations for telecommunications sites. This is in the policy of the city. I did not see any reason for us to deny it. I think there's a need for it, we'll improve the service in that area, and I did split with the chairman of the committee, and I believe that it should be approved, and I would so move that this would be approved and that-- See, who is appealing here? Who's the appellant? The applicant is the appellant. I would move the appeal granted.
Ms. Mr. Kousky.
I just had a question of the zoning administrator. What was the zoning administrator's original decision on this case?
Recommended approval of the grant.
So, I presume that with Mr. Burton's motion to grant the appeal, it would also reinstate all the conditions and the findings of the zoning administrator's original approval?
Yes, supplemental conditions and findings were prepared for the city clerk by the office.
If that's Mr. Burton's intent with the motion to add all the conditions and the supplemental conditions, then I will second it.
Mr. Reyes.
Council president members, the applicant did ask to have this continued for a week. I believe we don't have a report on this yet, so if I could request the council to allow us to continue this this week, I appreciate that. No?
No.
This was the one we split, wasn't it?
So, the chairman of the committee requested one week continuance on this item?
Yes, just to make sure the report's written up, and the applicant did request it, so--
Is that okay with you, Mr. Burton? Okay, then without objection, one week continuance on the item two, October 17th. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Seeing the request, public comment period is now closed for today's meeting. Next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session, Mr. President?
Let's clear the desk.
Do you have motions for posting and referral?
Motions are posted and referred.
That clears the desk before going into closed.
Okay, in accordance to California code, the city council will now adjourn into closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 33B is settlement in the case of Leon Poinder versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $350,000.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item 33C is settlement, and it's the Operating Industries Incorporated site, eighth partial consent decree, and that's in the amount of $316,597.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That also is approved. Next item?
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Are there adjourning motions? Any last business? With that, thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, do you wish to be recognized?
Yes, I just wanted to, on 33E that we continued, I just wanted to say that it is such a huge issue, it's a decision. I would suggest the city attorney can brief us individually on that issue, given the 33E was continued.
It was continued.
33E, it's a significant--
Good suggestion. Thank you. Well, have the city attorney's office reply to each council office, request to send the two settlement offer, settlement agreements forthwith to the mayor. And with that, thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.